I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of July 24th, 2019. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate cooperation on that. There are no final action items before the Planning Commission today, and the first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 10th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckheus.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, Beckheus.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
And Shear.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda, however, the two items on today's consent agenda, that those are items 1.1A, which is change of zone 19019, and item 1.1B, which is item use permit 19007, are being removed for a separate public hearing as requested by an adjacent property owner. There are no remaining items on the consent agenda, and there are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials that you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information up here at the front to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the Commission votes to defer action to continue the public hearing. Please note that I have declared a conflict of interest on the associated applications, change of zone 19019, and use permit 19007, and will recuse myself from this portion of the hearing. Due to the absence of Vice Chair Corr, I'm appointing Tom Beckheus to serve as temporary chair.
All right, Jerry, please call the first item.
Okay, I'll call both items that are associated. The first item is item 3.1A, change of zone 19019 from R4 Residential District to O3 Office Park District, and the associated item, which is item 1.1B, use permit 19007, to allow for office uses and related improvements with waivers, both on property generally located at 643 North 45th Street. Staff recommendation for the change of zone is approval, staff recommendation for the use permit is conditional approval. Are there any exporté communications to be disclosed on these items?
I see none. George.
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So the location in question is the southwest corner of Vine Street and North 45th. The request, again, is for a change of zone from R4 Residential to O3 Office District. The property is approximately 2.25 acres in size. There is the associated use permit 19007, which, there is a proposed access easement, which will show that momentarily with the use permit site plan, that would provide access to the planned apartment development to the west, the Wyuka CUP, which is permitted to have up to 193 units as part of that community unit plan. So the O3 Office District permits single-family, two-family, multifamily housing, as well as office uses. Retail services and personal services are conditionally permitted. The site in question is identified in the comprehensive plan for future residential land uses. However, O3 zoning would be appropriate at this location as it would continue the established zoning pattern in the area. This is the zoning pattern, or zoning map, for the general area. The property in question here, North 45th, North 46th, North 44th. So to the south is the Lancaster County government offices for the Department of Motor Vehicles, and then further south is existing O3 zoning. So by rezoning this property, you would continue that office pattern, which serves as a transition between the commercial to the east and the residential multifamily to the west. As far as the use permit, the request is to permit up to 25,000 square feet of commercial floor area, Lot 1, which would be to the north, would include up to 15,000 square feet of commercial floor area, whereas Lot 2 would permit 10,000 square feet of commercial floor area. There would also be an outlot in the southern part of the development that would provide for stormwater quality and open space. The applicant does note in their letter, their application letter, that the intended purpose for this property is for a plasma center, which would be considered an office use under the zoning ordinance. As part of this development pursuant to the access management plan, there would be a requirement for a right turn lane off North 45th Street. There is a pending application, a deviation request, related to that, and also to a left turn lane on North 45th Street as well. Waivers requested with this use permit include zero-foot setbacks for the two commercial lots, for the mutual property line between these properties, as well as a zero-foot setback for the mutual property line between outlot A and the adjacent commercial lot. These waivers are all internal, will not affect the external property boundary. And with that, I could answer any questions you may have.
Questions for George?
George, with regard to the zoning, if on that map, the public zoning, if it weren't owned, if it wasn't a county property, would that be O3 zoning?
Most likely yes, it would be office zoning.
And George, did you say that there was a turn lane required there?
Yes, because in the access management plan, North 45th Street is identified as an arterial, a minor arterial, which would require a right turn lane, and as I understand it, also a northbound left turn lane, but there's a pending deviation request for that right now.
Okay, thank you.
George, is the larger building, the plasma center, or?
The applicant can confirm, but I believe that's correct. I think they identified 11,000 square feet in their application.
And the smaller area, we don't know what's going to be in there?
It may be another user, the applicant can confirm that.
All right, thank you.
And so the right-of-way will give access to the residential property that is to be developed on the west side. There would also be an additional access to that property once it's developed?
Correct. The Wyuka CUP would also have access, direct access to Vine Street.
Okay. And was that off of that existing cut that's there, or is there a new access road?
I think it may be a new access. It would be on the north side of their property for that Wyuka CUP.
Okay.
Any other questions for George? All right, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Tom Houston. My address is 2 through 3 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln, appearing before you today on behalf of the applicant, Stowe Real Estate Holdings LLC, which made the application for the use permit under the O3 Office Park District. What I put on the overhead is really the site plan along with the grading plan. This project, Stowe Real Estate, develops and leases plasma centers to a variety of different little plasma centers across the country, and it has identified this site as an appropriate one for the city of Lincoln. The use permit would seek a total of 25,000 square feet between the two buildings. Lot 1 would be the plasma center. It is actually the building that would be built approximately 11,000 square feet, notwithstanding the fact that the use permit would permit up to 15,000 square feet. And then Lot 2 would be a speculative building. No user has been identified, and that property would be put on the market and sold at some point. The real issue that, as I understand it, is the potential concern about this site not having sufficient parking. And I would just submit to you that the parking matrix of the Lincoln Municipal Zoning Code requires the O3 Office Park District to have one stall per 300 square feet. And if a 15,000 square foot building were to be built, obviously the math's pretty simple on that one, it's going to be 50 stalls. The site plan shows 78 stalls adjacent to Lot 1, to that building, which is, you know, approximately 156% of the required parking. If the building is actually limited to the current design of 11,000 square feet, the actual coverage is more than 200% of the required parking under the O3 zone. Lot 2 has a sufficient number of parking stalls based upon a maximum of a 10,000 square foot building, but we don't know what size of building actually would be built there. The other thing I would point out, as shown by the grading plan, is that this parcel, and this driveway easement right here, and this is the plasma center, the 15,000 potential square foot footprint, is approximately four feet higher than the adjacent property without any sidewalk access. It's not designed for pedestrian access back and forth because this driveway easement is really required under the access management code, both under the adjacent property use permit and also this property's use permit. And it is the connecting drive that is required by the access management policy to limit the number of outlets and driveways onto Vine Street. So that's the primary purpose of it. My client didn't like it. I'm certainly certain that the adjacent property owner to the west didn't like it, but we figured out a way to try to make it work with the land uses because this property needed a driveway anyway. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Houston?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to take testimony and support, and this will be for both the change of zone and the use permit. Anyone here to testify in support?
Good afternoon, my name's Kent Seacrest, representing Stewart Development Partnership. We're the current landowner. We have a purchase agreement to sell to Stowe Development Company for their plasma center, and I just want to point out that we are just continuing offices up and down that corridor, and then there's retail to the east, the shopping area. So this is logical to have retail office, then transitioning into the residential apartments. There was a question about the site plan, and I think I brought the site plan for you to show you that connection, but we are going back and forth with our connections. They come through us, we can theoretically go through them, so it's important that we can get out to Vine at 42nd Street. And I cannot put, oh, there it is, to show you that connection. Nope, that's where we're at. I jumped my gun. It's probably sitting in my printer. The other thing I just want to point out is how important plasma is. I don't know about you, if you're an expert on plasma, but I just wanted to show you that this is an important attribute for our community to have, to have more than one plasma center. Plasma is a part of the blood. The blood has many components, it's showing you the red bloods, the white blood cells, the platelets, and plasma. And plasma is 55% of your blood, and 90% of plasma is water. But it's the remaining 10% that is so critical. Some people donate blood, which is you're donating everything. A plasma center can go, be a little bit different in that your blood doesn't just go into a bag. It recirculates, they are grabbing just the plasma part and putting the rest of it back into you, along with some fresh water and salt that replenishes the taking of the plasma. You're not supposed to do, you can take, do plasma 12 times a year, blood only four times a year. So this is a very important attribute, and what a lot of people don't understand is what does plasma, why is that important? And you probably can't read this, so that's where I'm not going to try it. But it's, one of the things is it's for clotting. It's used to clot, and a lot of people have problem clotting, and that is the magic stuff that allows people to clot their blood properly. It's also used to carry, when traditional antibiotics can't enter your system, this is the way antibiotics are improperly infused into your system. There's genetic emphysema, and it's used to solve that riddle. It's also when you're a burn patient or a surgical patient, they use it to help burn patients and surgical patients to treat their burns and their surgery. And then it's used to treat rabies, tetanus, dialysis, organ transplants, pregnant women who have unusual RH incompatibility with their baby. This is what keeps them from not having problems with the unborn or death of a baby. So it is a very important ingredient. We depend on it. The amount that's used every day is over 15,000 units, so we need to collect it, our share here in Lincoln as well. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Seacrest?
So your client will continue to own the property to the west?
No, my client does not own the property to the west.
Oh, okay.
A real estate developer up in Omaha is the residential, it's an apartment complex that hasn't been built yet. So our sale would be a complete sale.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in support? Okay, we'll move on to testimony in opposition. This is both for the change of zone and the use permit.
Good afternoon, my name is Jerry Cavell, I'm with the Schlossberg Company. Our address is 10040 Regency Circle in Omaha, and we do own the multifamily property to the west of the subject property. That shows up okay. We are approved, as George mentioned, for 193 apartment units, and we are in the process of interviewing architects for designing the buildings and going forward with this project. At the time that the city approved, our project, they required us to create an access easement through our property, from a connection here at Vine Street, through the property to a connection through the subject property, which would then connect to 45th Street, to allow cross-access for everybody. The subject property was zone R4 at the time that we developed our, purchased our property and developed the plant, the subject site plans and that sort of thing. If you know, we currently are planning to do two apartment buildings. There would be four stories and 70 units each. They'd have garages in one portion underneath the building, other garages on site, and then surface parking for the remainder of the residence. We are pro-development, we are developers, we develop in multistates, all the way from Texas to Minnesota, and we're not opposed to development on the subject parcel. We aren't against plasma centers and the collection of plasma. And however, during our review of the submitted documents that were sent to the city and our research on the proposed development, we became aware of the one aspect that could be detrimental to our apartment development. And it's been mentioned before, but becoming a plasma donation center where thousands of people can come each week to donate their plasma and be compensated for it, we know from experience that this use is a heavy parking requirement. Every donor that comes typically will come by car, especially here, there's two other centers in Lincoln, one at South 17th and one at 22nd and N. Those are downtown applications, and we've had some past experience with those where we see how the heavy parking and the plasma centers spill over to adjacent parking lots because people are coming, they want to get in, get their donation done, and move on, and so they're trying to find a parking place and circulating around the area. A donor will typically spend an hour and a half or more in these centers to do their donation. It's actually possible, I have to disagree with Kent, it's possible for them to donate up to twice a week, not once a month. And so in this city and other cities, we've had experience with this, we know that the parking demands are heavy. And it's our belief that the office parking ratio in the city ordinance just doesn't cut it for this type of application. We do recognize that they are showing more parking on the site than is required for the O3 zoning, but we also don't think that it's going to be adequate during the peak hours of operation, which are typically in the evenings when people come. Sometimes these are like part-time jobs for people to help supplement their income, and so evening hours are critical times for these operations. Because of the access road that was required when we came in to get our approvals, it's an easy connection between the apartment community and the plasma center. And we know pretty much what we can expect is going to happen a few years down the road when both properties are developed, that when the peak hours come, there'll be donors that can't find a parking place over in, around the plasma center. They're going to swoop around through the access easement and park in adjacent apartment parking that is there for the sake of our apartment people and their guests. Our apartment residents are going to come home from work and find the parking places jammed full. They're going to call our manager, and our manager is going to call the tow truck, but they're going to have to also get out there and try to verify which cars are residents and which cars are not, and then of those cars that are not are any of these guests of our residents, and go through a lot of effort to try and identify who needs to be towed so that we can protect our space. And the end net result is unhappy residents and unhappy donors when they find out the car's been towed, and very happy towing companies, but we'd like to avoid all that. There's too much at stake in our opinion because if this is an ongoing thing, then our residents get disgruntled and they move out, word spreads, and we have trouble renting apartments. Now, we obviously are going to install signage. The signage will say apartment parking only, violators will be towed, but I also know that the people that come to the plasma centers come and go. They sometimes take a couple months off, and they really don't have an opportunity to learn not to park there like other situations would. So standing here today, we're, we know this is all hypothetical, but what we'd like to suggest is a permanent solution so that down the road, if this occurs, we have a way to deal with it. And we'd like to suggest that we are able to, even though this isn't popular with planning staff, we know this, to put a gate across the access easement between the two properties that would be motorized. Our residents would have a key fob transmitter, they'd be able to come and go. Emergency vehicles can come and go because they would, we installed Knox locks at the gates so that they can get in, and we do this in many cities where we have gated communities, and we work with the fire departments and emergency vehicles on that quite closely. So we don't believe that that limitation of access for the office development would have any impact on their traffic circulation ability, because they'll have an easy time getting in often on 45th Street at that point. So we'd ask for this provision, we're not asking to deny the plasma center or this development, we're just asking that we be granted the permission that in the event we have a parking issue that I described, that we be allowed to install a motorized gate across those, that access easement, so that we can easily keep people from coming in onto our property, avoid all the towing and all the other mess, and we hope it would never occur, but we'd like to ask for consideration that we be allowed to do that if that does happen. Thank you very much.
Questions?
Could that, could that be done later on?
Yes, the gate could be installed at any time. We'd probably make electrical provisions for it upfront, but we'd bring it in, put it in if this occurs. If it doesn't occur, we'd never do it. We'd leave it for free flow and free access.
Is there, is there a need to address it at this point, or could that be addressed should the parking start to occur?
I think the reason we're here today is because we know that planning staff's been against gated anything for a long time, and so we thought we'd make an appeal to the Planning Commission, City Council, in hopes that we could get this settled for this special case and be allowed to do this in the event we have an issue.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition to either the use permit or change of zone? All right, staff questions? George, please.
George, what's the opposition to the gate? I'm sure you have some good rationale to tell me.
Sure. So generally speaking, this access easement is not unique. We have access easements or connectivity in other developments throughout the city, and they do not generally have a gate. The intent is for mutual access both directions, not for exclusive access for one use.
Thank you.
What's been the experience with regard to parking in the plasma centers downtown?
I can't speak specific to plasma centers, but I will say that the plasma center use falls under office. The zoning ordinance does not make a distinction between medical office versus office, so it falls under the office. And whether it's a retail use or office use, just generally speaking... And whether it's a retail use or office use, just generally speaking, you may have a certain business or entity that is more popular than another and there may be more traffic. The, the standard in the zoning ordinance is a general standard that's intended to be efficient and reasonable and not wasteful. As historical note, I would mention that in years past, and this was before my time, but in checking with another planner, that there was a medical office parking requirement. And I believe it was one space per 225 square feet instead of the current office one per 300. And the reason, when I asked him why that was removed or changed, was because at the time it was deemed unreasonable or not justifiable. And so the one per 300 is the standard which would apply.
So, so when we're talking about a, a medical office though, I mean, and I, I should, I remiss in that I did not look up the standards with regard to, with regard to O3, but you think of an office generally being open, you know, business hours, eight to five. Is it my understanding that plasma centers are, often have more extended hours than that?
I, I can't speak to the, the plasma centers specifically, but again, a medical office would fall under that general office category, which is deemed the one per 300 as sufficient in the ordinance.
Okay. Does O3 have operating hour requirements as part of the zoning?
Just off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Shear, Joy?
Are there any rules or adjacencies with the public office next door? Is that an eight to five building that is to the south, I believe? Yes.
I don't know the exact hours for the Lancaster County Government Building, but it's P zoning, so it would not be subject to the same zoning regulations, though they, they do have parking, obviously. So I, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Is there rules against parking there after hours? Do you know that?
I, I don't, I don't know that. I don't know for sure if that would be allowed or not.
Okay, thank you.
Someone earlier had mentioned that there's a four-foot grade separation. So how is that being transitioned between the apartment project and the, and the medical?
I might let the applicant speak to the specifics, but I know there, as far as the stormwater management, they, they looked at the Wayuka facility and, and that was part of their, their planning as far as stormwater and grading.
George, what recourse would Schlossberg have should their parking lot be impacted years down the road?
Well, I, I don't want to speak as a legal counsel, but I think as any property owner, they, if there's a trespass situation, they could address that from, from a trespass situation. It's, it's not a zoning ordinance situation.
Sure. And specifically to the use permit granted by the planning department, any recourse there?
I'm not aware that we could retroactively go back to this use permit once, once it's approved.
Okay. Thank you, George. Any other questions for George? All right. Thank you. Mr. Houston, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, two things I'd like to address. Number one, I think if there is a future problem, I think a conversation could go a long way to cure any of these problems. And I think our client has vast experience in developing these plasma centers because that's their specialty, that they develop around the country. And I asked them specifically, are you comfortable with a required number of parking stalls? And they said yes. Based upon our experience nationwide, this is the right number of parking stalls for a facility of approximately 11,000 square feet. So they're very comfortable with it and they're, you know, very familiar with the operations of such a center. And the idea of a gate, while it sounds probably good in theory, I can hear my client saying, well, what's in it for me then? I mean, I, I thought this was supposed to be a reciprocal easement that provides connectivity. And undoubtedly, the users of the plasma center will not be frequently going through the multifamily site to reach Vine Street because it's much easier to get there on 45th Street. But if there's a, you know, a traffic jam or something, I can see on occasion it would potentially be used and a gate would prevent that. So I, I think if the intent of the access management policy is to provide reciprocity in the access easement, it should not be a unilateral easement. That's, I think, my client's position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion.
We have to take them separately.
Take them separately. We'll start with the change of zone.
I would move approval of the change of zone, 19019.
Second, Finnegan.
Discussion?
I think the change of zone makes a lot of sense with regard to the zoning that's already in place in that area. It's a great buffer between the residential area and the business area on the west. And it, it makes a lot of sense, especially with the pending development.
Other comments? I'll, I'll just add, I, I do think that the, the access is to mutual benefit of both parcel owners and should remain as it stands today. All right. With that, Jerry, will you call the roll?
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone, 19019. Beckius?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the use permit.
I move approval of the use permit, 19007.
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
I'm, I'm going to be in support of the use permit and the parking that's required for it based on the history here in Lincoln. And that's, other communities appear to have their plasma centers at the similar ratio of one to 300 in the research that I looked at. So that's why I'll be supporting.
I also will support the use permit as is because I believe there should be access both ways. And they should have it if there's a, an issue that arises in the future, I think it could be addressed in the future with communication between the two parties.
All right. Jerry?
Okay, this would be for conditional approval of use permit, 19007. Beckius?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
All right. As we get Commissioner Shear back in, why don't we go ahead and continue on with public hearing?
Okay, very good. I'll be calling the next four item, associated items together. Item 4.1A is comprehensive plan amendment, 19003, to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from commercial to industrial on approximately 135 acres. The associated annexation, 19007, to annex approximately 576 acres. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. The associated change of zone, 19020, from AG Agricultural District to I3 Employment Center District on approximately 590 acres. Staff recommendation is for approval. And the associated use permit, 19008, to allow for the development of up to 2 million, 2 million square feet for a data center and associated uses, including waivers to screening and design standards, height and lot regulations, and specific use regulations of the I3 zoning district. These are all generally located on property at Highway 77 and Interstate 80. Staff recommendation for the use permit is conditional approval. I will note that staff submitted a motion to amend adding an additional condition of approval as requested by the Transportation and Utilities Department to revise the right-of-way and paving with for the proposed street. And I neglected to indicate that staff recommendation for, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
No. I see none.
Good afternoon. David Carey, the Director of the Planning Department, here before you today along with Tim C. from our Law Department to provide you some information about this project. I'm kicking this off today to kind of let you know that how we're viewing this is that this is a very unique opportunity type of project. This is something that in the context of our comprehensive plan and planning for this area, we're talking about a project that is the fruition of that vision of what we would like to see happen on this property. This, our comprehensive plan was updated back in 2006. And in that update, we identified this area for an economic development employment center. That obviously has not happened up to this point. We did have a proposal many years ago, over a decade ago, to develop this site, and that did not happen. In the interim period, the city has made an effort to provide water and sewer service to the property for the hopes of having something significant happen up at this location. That was accomplished. And so that step being taken by the city is now being met with the opportunity that we were hoping for would happen at this site. So with all that in mind, just want to kind of point out that this is somewhat unique in the sense of that this is, the, the data center industry nationwide is very competitive. And so in our dealings with the applicant, we've been working on this for a while now. Tim especially has been working on this for a while now. And so this is the type of project that we're bringing forward, the change of zone, the annexation, the comprehensive plan amendment, and the use permit, really to stand on its own merits. That these are items that we feel confident as being presented and being proposed to you for consideration can be acted on today. And it's something that we're going to continue to work on, an annexation agreement as we move forward and as this goes to city council. So can I wanted to set the stage for that. I'm going to have Tim go through some of the details and overview of all the different pieces and parts of this, and then we certainly will be available for questions. Thank you.
See, Neethan, I get to talk first instead of last on something like this. Again, Tim C., City Law Department. So as David said, you've got four items on your agenda today. You've got a comprehensive plan amendment, a change of zone, an annexation, and a use permit. So I thought we would just take a few minutes and go through those items. I think that's the, the most coherent way of going about this. So the area we're talking about is, this is, this is the 2040 Lincoln area, future land use plan in front of you on your monitors. This is the area up here. North 56th Street comes through here. The interstate comes through here. So we are north and west of that intersection. As the area, as the area, area land use plan shows now, we've got purple, which is industrial for a large part of the site. But then at the southeast corner of the site, we've got a commercial area. That was, I think, in response to previous plans for the sites and previous concepts for the site. The reason you have a change in front of you is because of the current user and the data center would be more considered an industrial. And so that's the, that's the change for the comprehensive plan, just to change that small area of commercial there at the corner to industrial to be consistent with the rest of the, the site. I think it's important to note that the, the change to the more intense use is, is away from any residences or anything like that. It's actually closer to the interstate and Highway 77. So I think those are important to note. The application before us today represents a single user for the entire site. So what comes to you today is 570 acres of annexation and 590 acres of change of zone, all one user, not, not intended to, to our understanding, to be split up amongst a number of different users. So that's the change to the comprehensive plan. This is the annexation map. The proposal is to annex almost the entire section, sparing the area immediately adjacent to Bluff Road and this parcel adjacent to Highway 77. The city's current limits come up and include this section right here. Here's the interstate here, Highway 77. There's a small portion of land at this very southeast corner of this section that has already been annexed into the city. As part of the, the city's efforts going back nearly, maybe more than a decade, resources have been put in place and, and the water and sewer have actually been extended to this site already. So they, they exist today. I think they just finished the sanitary sewer this spring or early this summer. So again, 573 acres of the annexation, it's adjacent to and abutting the, the city limits here. The city would then take on, should be noted, the city will take on responsibilities for maintaining 40th Street, a portion of Bluff Road, and then additional sections within Interstate 80 and Highway 77, just as a result of annexing the property.
Tim?
Yeah?
Could, could you just trace on the screen the limits of the city even as it goes farther to the east?
To the east, actually, it, it stops here. None of this, none of the area east, excuse me, east, you said.
Yeah, so you, you concentrated on that corner, but can you, I'm just doing this so that everybody is clear. Okay.
It does, it, so you're right, it does. Thank you, Commissioner. It goes to the east and includes the commercial and industrial sites to the east of Highway 77 there at that location.
Thanks.
Both north and south of, I think that's Arbor or Alvo.
Sure.
But that's the annexation. Miss Neethan? Again, this is being done at the request of a, of an entity that has control over the site. So in other words, they have the right to purchase the site. They haven't done so yet, waiting for these actions to go through. Next item on your agenda, I believe, is the change of zone. This is as it exists today, this is all an AG-zoned area. Ag to the south, ag to the west, ag to the north. The city's landfill is over here, just as a point of reference. We have some highway commercial south of the interstate, but in large part, this is ag and that's consistent with the fact that we just haven't developed this yet. It's a reflection of the fact that that plan, that land use plan hasn't come into fruition yet. This is the possibility for that. So the intent would be to rezone all of this site to I3. I3 is described in the code as being in place to permit the development of attractive office and light industrial facilities. You must have at least a 30-acre site in order to do I3. It can only be approved through a use permit. Obviously, you have that on your agenda today as well. There are some limitations with respect to metal exteriors on some of the buildings. I think there's a request for a waiver of that in the use permit. But again, the entire 590 acres becomes I3 zoning. And that's, that's really all there, there is to sort of say about the zoning part, that part of it. Last item on your agenda, I hesitate to show you this, but this is conceptual, I think is the best way I can say it. That's the representations that have been made to us. But nevertheless, the notes are what would be required and, and what this authorizes is 2 million square feet of data center use on this site. What you see here might be described as a conceptual Phase 1. It's not, I don't think, and there's obviously been some thought put into it, but I wouldn't represent to you that this is exactly what you will see when they come in with building permits. This is, again, a concept. Just the building here, a small building here to the east. I think it's probably hard to see even if I zone in, so I will just represent to you. This is a placeholder, I think is the best way to describe it, for an LES substation. The site has two access points off of Highway 77. That's the only access points for this site. There are no, there's not been a request for an access point off of 40th Street. There's not been a request for access off of Bluff Road, so all access will come to this from Highway 77. The site, the access to the south, at least initially, would primarily be a construction access point. The site, the access point up here to the north would be a, the primary access. So that's where most of the vehicles would come and go, with the exception, again, of the construction traffic here to the south. It would be a public road coming off of Highway 77. So you would have access not only to this property, but that public road would provide access to the, partial to the north. But then, once you enter the site, everything becomes private. There are, there are driveways, they are, they're not for the purpose of circulating the public, they're for the purpose of conducting business on that site. This would, all indications are this would be a secure site. You wouldn't necessarily just drive out there and, and look around, so to speak. And it's not there to provide circulation for the neighborhood or for a number of users. Again, one user for the entire site. So, so that brings, I guess, another, another concept that's a little bit unique to this. They would come in, they would come in and do administrative amendments to this use permit to show, here's where the next building's going to be, here's where the Phase 3 building's going to be, here's where the, but, but you're not going to see preliminary plats coming in, you're not going to see final plats coming in because this is going to be one lot that they're going to they're going to build on. They're not going to be creating separate parcels for individual entities to build upon, because again, just one entity. Again, this is, this is a conceptual Phase 1, something to look at and get an idea, but not, certainly not anything to, to take with a great deal of certainty, other than I can say the access points are pretty well set. Those are set by NDOT. The, I think the median breaks are already actually constructed out there, so those are, those are largely set. This is, Highway 77 is a controlled access highway through there, so you, you can't just go out and approve access points at different locations. Those are largely set, so you won't see changes with regard to that. Internal to the site, there may be some changes, but I think that's all I have. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. I will, I will tell you, I will give you the best answers I can, but I may simply not know the answer, so.
Questions?
Yes. The property, have, has the buyer already got contracts with everybody in that whole area?
My understanding is they have contracts to purchase all of the property within the...
Farmland that, about 40th, the farmer has agreed.
My understanding is they own everything, or they have contracts on everything in the site.
Okay. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around 2 million square feet. Can you give me an example of what 2 million square feet might look like?
I don't have one in the city.
And that's, I assume that's going to be after the whole area is developed, so it won't start right there?
Right, so that 2 million square feet is a maximum on the site. And so that's the idea that you build Building 1, and then you can come in and build the second building and the third building, and you do that administratively up until you point where you have 2 million square feet. And Commissioner Finnegan, I wish I had a great example of 200 million square feet, but I don't. Yeah.
I think, and I worked at Super Walmarts, 230,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The new, the new Shields was, the new Shields was 270,000 square feet, was the new Shields building, on three levels.
And then I want to make sure that, that the public understands that the data center is not a call center.
Hmm.
Is that accurate?
That's true.
Is, can you give me an example of a data center?
Well, a data center would be a facility at which you have a number of servers as part of the, the computer, the digital world that we live in. So all that information that's going back and forth has to go through somewhere or be stored somewhere. This is the type of facility where it would be.
And is that why we are discussing chemicals, or is that just part of the industrial zoning?
The note about the chemicals is, I think, a standard note we would have on any kind of industrial zoning, just to, I haven't heard any representation that there will be hazardous chemicals stored on this site. But I think a number of years ago, Planning and Health got together and said, we should have a 300-foot buffer around industrial zones next to residential, and we should prevent the storage of hazardous chemicals within that buffer zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Dick? I assume, you said the median break's already there, but I assume there will be a, a left turn lane and a right turn, right deceleration lane?
Certainly, there will be some turn lanes. It'll have to be installed out here to accommodate the amount of trips that will come in and out of that site, probably at both access points. But I would note that an engineer from the developer is here as well, so he can probably help to address some of those more technical questions.
And if I've done my math correctly, Dean, the 590 acres would be 4,498,400 square feet. So 2 million of that would comprise a little less than half.
That's a mile by a mile. The land that they have is almost a mile by, which is impressive.
Yeah.
I don't think we've seen anything like that.
Who else?
Yeah, I was curious about the mention in the staff plan about the Sunshine Hills Community Unit Plan?
Mm-hmm.
And the effect that the zoning will have on the CUP or the, and the proposed condition that would have part of that rezoned. Can you elaborate on that?
I, I will, and I'll let David or Steve come and correct me on that if I get it incorrect. But my understanding is that the, the CUP was approved based on the, the AG zoning and that there would be density requirements with that. If that's, if that, let me get a map back up there to illustrate it better. When this, this corner up here is included in this, in that, that CUP, if that is carved off, obviously that decreases the amount of land and increases the density associated with that CUP. In order to meet that new density requirement, you have to rezone to AGR in order to meet the density requirements.
Correct. But this, the current owner of, of what we have in front of us today is not associated with that CUP?
Certainly not, as, no, there's, there's a number of residences here, I believe, at the moment, but they, they don't have any interest in, in that CUP.
So that would be driven by staff coming, or...
Yeah, it'll have to be driven by staff.
Kind of driven by that staff. Okay, understood.
Do you know, there are two very nice homes on Bluff Road right above this property. Have the owners been involved in discussion about what's going on? Do you know that?
Commissioner Finnegan, I don't, I don't believe that has occurred, just being perfectly honest about it. I don't believe the developer has reached out to them at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Can you talk a little bit more about the process that we're looking at with the Capital View corridor and how we're identifying that?
Yeah, the Capital View corridor is a, is a, is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. So we have three different, we have three different levels of protections, I guess you would say, with regard, with regard to the Capitol. You have the Capitol Environments District where we limit height on buildings primarily, certainly to the north of the Capitol Building, I believe, to the, to the west as well. Then we have a, a Capitol, not I can get the term right, but it's essentially a view corridor as well that comes from the west of the Capitol. And that is, that's in code. The Capital View corridor that we're talking about here is in the comprehensive plan. It is a, it is an idea that we are going to impact your view of the Capitol as you drive in from Highway 77, and that we should take steps to consider that and protect that. And as a result of that, this, that question will be put to the Capitol Environments Commission tomorrow at a public hearing for their consideration. But it is not a, it's not in the code. This is just a part of, it's part of the comprehensive plan to identify, we want to be able to see the Capitol as we come in. I believe in the staff report, there were some photograph, or some perspectives to show what that might look like as you came into the, into the city. But of course, standing here at the lectern, I'm not going to be able to track down those pictures and put in front of you.
I, I have them here.
Yeah.
And I don't know that if staff had not indicated to me where the Capitol was in these photos, I would have known where it was.
Mm-hmm.
It seems to be we're a little far out here, on the very edge of the corridor.
Yeah, I would add to the, the questioning here about the Capital View corridor part of this. A lot of this depends on what actually is developed on the site, the location of the buildings, the height of the buildings. That'll have a larger impact on this than anything. It's kind of obvious, but the fact is that we don't have that specific information nailed down at this time. And so it's very possible that we will have very little to, no impact on the, on the view coming in off of Highway 77, or it could be impacted. But that is part of what we'll discuss tomorrow with the Capitol Environments Committee. So it's going through the process that it needs to go through to be discussed.
And it is at the very edge, the northern, it's at the very end of the corridor, is that correct, this location, this site?
Yes, it is. And you're right, it is a fair, fairly good distance away from the actual Capitol structure. And so when you do see it from up there, it is quite small. But we do want to take it seriously because you can still see the view from there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Joy.
No, I think that's great. It goes in front of the committee, and that will be also forwarded on in the approval process, so it'll be great.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Tom?
So in, and maybe this is, Tim, maybe this is a better question for the applicant. So the, the waiver, then the height waiver to 75 feet, are we anticipating the possibility of buildings being built to 75 feet? Or are we talking about like cooling, or, do, do we have an idea as to what's potentially going to 75 feet?
I wish I could answer that for you, Commissioner Beckus, but I think it's a better question for the developer's representative.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Take testimony from the applicant.
Hi, my name's Joe Shields. I work for HDR Engineering, and I'm here to represent the applicant for any technical questions he might have. So I'd be, I'd enjoy any questions you might have.
Tom?
Do you know what on the site could potentially be going to 75 feet?
I couldn't say specifically. There are structures other than data center buildings that are needed to support...
Sure.
...this type of operation. So certainly cooling towers and things of that nature.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Can you give me an example of a data center in Nebraska? Do we have one?
I think there's one in Lincoln. If not, I know there's one in Sarpy County. I think maybe Facebook or Amazon has built one in Sarpy County. And there's a second one actually being built in, in Sarpy County by another entity that hasn't been disclosed yet.
Anyone else? Nope, okay. Thank you.
All right.
We'll go to testimony in support, and I just want to reiterate that testimony in support or opposition, when we get to that, will be for all four items, the comprehensive plan amendment, the annexation, change of zone, and use permit. So testimony on any of those items is, is what we're looking for in, in support or opposition. We'll start with support. Testimony and support.
Good afternoon, I'm Pat Haberty. I'm the Vice President, Economic Development at the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. I just wanted to come up here today and let you know that we've been working with this company really for an extended period of time here. Some great partnerships with City Staff and LES. And this is a tremendous project, tremendous opportunity for the city of Lincoln. Data centers are an industry that is a target of ours, and one reason is, is the really high investment that they'll pay, or that they'll make in a community. They've made application for, on the incentive side, for about $600 million worth of capital investment on this project here. And we're under a non-disclosure agreement, so we can't talk about any more than really what's been disclosed here in some of these documents. But we do know historically the economic impact that data centers make in communities where they currently are. I would be able to answer a couple of questions that Commissioner Finnegan had. One is, you're looking for a comparison, 2 million square feet. If you look at the complex at Kawasaki, now, there's a couple buildings there, but they have north of 2 million square feet on that campus there.
Great, that's great.
Yeah. There was another question here, and I forgot what it was. Oh, a data center's in Nebraska. So there is the Facebook data center, but they just had a ribbon cutting on recently. And that data center is north of 2 million square feet. They're still building that. They've got probably thousands some construction workers on site, and they're continuing to build that. Also in the Sarpy County area, there's, they're just starting on another data center there, another significant one. They've also got several others in the area, a company called Travelers, Fidelity. They all have data centers there. Again, that's been a target for our organization, and we think this is a great investment, great opportunity for the city of Lincoln.
Questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony and support? Are there testimony and support? Okay, is there testimony in opposition, again, for any of the four items? Testimony and opposition? Okay. So we will go to staff questions. Do we have any other questions for staff? Yes, we do.
I have a couple of questions, yeah.
Tom or David or both?
I'm not sure. You can decide once I get up. I realize when, when you had the map up at one point, you pointed out a, an area on the north side that could be a substation. I think that's what you, what you said. So tell me a little bit about, is that a definitive need for that substation? Is that just dependent on how it develops? And, and what's the effect on the residential area to the north?
I'm going to let Tim take that. He's going to know a lot more on the details of that discussion.
I'll get my electrical engineering hat on here.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
Yeah, thanks. It's going to take me a while to find that hat. Conceptually speaking, yeah, I mean, the idea is that there is a transmission line from LES that runs right through that, right through that parcel.
Okay.
And so in order to make that, those, that power from those lines available, you've got to have some kind of a substation to convert the electricity from the voltage at the, at the lines down to something that somebody can actually use. That's the...
And if I recall, there was some sort of waiver that was described that talked about, oh, screening. And this, was that related to the substation and the residential area? Waiving the screening of public utility structures adjacent to the residential districts if utility structures are set back 300 feet?
Yeah, the, the idea behind that is that on the site plan... Here we go. You're not going to be able to, I wish the line was a little darker, but you can see a faint blue line here. This represents a 300-foot buffer from the edge of the property.
Okay.
So the idea would be that you, to waive a screening requirement for that substation because of the fact that it is set back a fairly significant distance from the residential property to the north.
So it's further from, from the property than that 300 feet?
Right.
Okay. Okay. And I, I have to say, I'm still struggling a little bit with the AGR requirement for the change of the CUP in terms of whether that development has a voice in deciding, I mean, if that's relevant to them, given, just given that, I mean, that district's there already. These are residents who are already in this place. I'm not articulating the question very well, but I'm just, I just want to understand what this means to those folks who are already there in terms of the size limitations that that might be, that might be required as a result of switch to AGR.
Steve's going to take this one.
Got it.
Steve Hendrickson, the Planning Department. So there'd be two options. The first is the route that is described in the use permit. The applicant is going to submit the change of zone application for AG to AGR. It would then be forwarded. Basically, these properties are operating under AGR-type rules. Anyhow, they're three-acre lots, they have been clustered, and the AGR zoning would simply reflect the use pattern that they have today. So we don't view the rezoning of their property to AGR as negative on those properties. It would allow that they pretty much conform. If for some reason, the residents decided they didn't want to be rezoned to AGR, but this use permit had already in change of zone been approved, they would be basically non-conforming CUP.
I see.
And, but as a non-conforming use, if their house suddenly burned down, they'd have the ability to apply to, to rebuild it. That's why we think the AGR zoning is really the better route, because it wouldn't really have a negative impact on them.
And it's relevant to the properties that are there now, as you said. They're currently within three-acre lots.
Yes, correct. They, they reflect that kind of AGR character.
How many homes are already built in that CUP?
There are four.
Four, and they, are they all on Bluff Road?
They're on a separate road that comes off of Bluff Road.
Thanks, Steve.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Any other testimony that the applicant wants to give, rebuttal or anything? Anything you heard that you want to clarify?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we are ready to entertain a motion. We will entertain separate motions for this, and we'll start with the comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll move approval of comprehensive plan amendment 19003.
Second, Campbell.
Discussion.
I think it's an appropriate change.
Okay, anything else?
I'll, I'll talk about all four at the same time.
Yeah, I'm going to do that too. Yeah, I'm going to do that, too. So, let's do that, yep.
Yeah. This development is the kind of development that cities often dream of, and I'm excited to see the possibility of what will be developed out here. I think the site itself is well-positioned for this type of development, as it has been envisioned over a number of years. I think the impact to existing surrounding neighbors is minimal. I, I, I think that the comprehensive man, plan amendment is appropriate for this area. I don't think it's out of line. I will support the project.
Anyone else? Okay, let's start down with Dean and just work our way.
I'll support it also. I think this is an incredible opportunity that just doesn't come along. I can't imagine the hours you've put in to pull this together, and so, I, I think it's just incredible opportunity, and I hope they will be good neighbors, so.
Christie?
And I concur with my fellow commissioners. I will be supporting all four votes, and I do believe that it is really what we're looking for as a city, and that with the highway protection and those types of things, the public will have adequate support for access in and out of the site, and I think it's a very positive moving forward.
Tracy?
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a really exciting project, and perhaps there's less, less definition than a lot of things that come to us, which it's hard to get around, our arms around how amorphous it feels at times, but the, it doesn't take away from the fact that this is a really great opportunity for our community.
Dick, anything?
I'd just echo what's been said.
Very good. I'm going to support the motion also. I think that as we work with and update and revise the comp plan periodically, this hits all the buttons and meets many, many goals as we go through that process every, every so often. I think the use is, is very appropriate on the site. It's, it's, the way this comes together with the kind of infrastructure that's needed for a use like this happens very infrequently, and it's all there in terms of power and road and sewer and water and everything. So, that, it's, it's just a very unique opportunity that I think we, we need to seize our, seize on as a community. I'm very impressed that it, that we're going to have a lot this size in the city once it's annexed. That's, that's really impressive. And I think it does make it a little, maybe there's a little hesitation on, on the process that comes, because it's one lot and it's all done administratively, but I also think it's, that, that in itself is also an opportunity to really let our process work the way it needs to. So, it, it just hits all the, all the goals for me, and as I said, I'm going to, I'm going to support it. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of comprehensive plan amendment 19003. Beckus?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, any other discussion specific? Okay, I think we covered all that. So, I think we're ready to vote for that, for this one?
Okay, Beckus?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There's fewer of us, this should be easy. Okay, we're ready for a motion for the change of zone.
Move approval, Beckus.
Second, Campbell.
Okay.
I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone 19020. Beckus?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There's fewer of us, this should be easy. Okay, we're ready for a motion for the change of zone.
Move approval, Beckus.
Second, Campbell.
Okay.
I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone 19020. Beckus?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And finally, a motion for the use permit.
Move approval, Joy?
Second, Finnegan.
Any other additional discussion?
Okay, we do have a proposed amendment.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep, as, as...
As amended.
As amended. As amended.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it wasn't, yeah.
Okay, I think we are ready to vote.
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of use permit 19008, as amended.